Good evening and welcome to tonight's Fort Wayne Community School Board of School Trustees meeting. We begin this meeting as we do each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) And now we have a roll call of members.
Antoinette Payne, District 4.
Julie Hollingsworth, District 1.
Noah Smith, District 3.
Jennifer Mathias, District 2.
Ann Duff, Member at Large.
And to my left, we have Dr. Mark Daniel, Superintendent for Wayne Community Schools, and Angie Feller, Clerk of the Board, and I'm Maria Norman, Member at Large. This evening, we start with awards and recognition, and we have the Indiana Department of Educational Excellence Award. It is recommended that the Board recognize Shannon Quigley, Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, for receiving the Digital Innovator Excellence Award from the Indiana Department of Education. The IDOE hosted its third annual Indiana Educational Excellence Awards Gala to celebrate the honor and achievements of educators who support student learning. One special award recognizes an educator who uses technology to enhance student learning by taking the initiative to learn, implement, and help others integrate digital tools in the classroom. This black tie event took place in Indianapolis on Friday, September 6th, bringing together nearly 550 educators and guests from across the state. Shannon Quigley, please come forward so we may congratulate you. Congratulations, Shannon.
Congratulations.
Yeah. All right, that brings up the consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from the meeting on October 14th, vouchers and payroll, personnel report, and required disclosures. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, everybody. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Daniel, did you have anything?
I did not.
No? Okay. Thank you. Okay. We have no old business, so we are to new business. Let me get there. Here we are. Okay. Tony, are you up?
I am.
Can you do item A, please?
Sorry, my computer thinks it's a text. This is the Robots for Autism.
Yep. Okay.
It is recommended that the Board approve the acceptance of the IDOE Robots for Autism RoboKind grant for the 2024-25 school year in the amount of $74,300. This grant will provide two new robots and renewed subscriptions for the previous four, which will use to teach social emotional learning in our autism classroom at Shambok and Washington Center, as well as our K-2 behavioral support classroom at Haley, Price, St. Joe, South Wayne, and Studi. Carrie Arkin, Behavioral Support Special Education Teacher, Brandy Scott, Instructional Support Facilitator, Whitney Jones Burns, Compliance Manager, and Jennifer Burning, Special Education Director, will be available to answer questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Jen. Thanks, Tony. Any questions for the group that has come to answer all of our questions?
Is there anything they want to share about how this will help kids K through 2? Draw straws on it later.
Hi, my name is Carrie Arkin. I am a behavioral support teacher at Studi, and I have the K through 2 kids in my class. And four of my kids use it. We try to get three out of the five days a week that they use it. On top of my social skills, the robot, my robot's name is Milo, he works with the kids and he does individual social skills with my students. So they get the interaction with me at one point, and then they use Milo at another point. And he runs through similar breathing techniques and how to interact with other kids, how to interact with teachers, and how to interact with adults. And they go through those skills. And my students love working with Milo.
More than you?
And...
More than you?
More than me, sometimes. But they really enjoy working with Milo. And you do see the benefits after they use him. And we can, I can, even though I've taught breathing skills, I could go, what would Milo do? And then they would also breathe, like, do the breathing techniques. So that's what they do.
Hello, my name is Brandy Scott, and we use Carver at Shamball Elementary in the Advanced Autism Support Classroom. And some of the benefits of having the robot in the classroom is sometimes the one-on-one instruction or the one-on-one time the student can have with the robot, especially if they're having a not-so-good day. They can actually talk to the robot about their hard feelings and things like that. In addition to social skills, some individuals with ASD sometimes have a difficult time communicating with people, but they find it a little bit more, kind of like, almost like a peer interaction or a less complicated interaction when they can interact with Carver. It's almost like their little friend. They teach all of, the robot teaches an array of skills, and so it can be tailored to the specific student based on their IEP goals. And so that is not only what the students like about Carver, but that's what I like about Carver as well. Thank you.
What's your robot?
Carver.
Carver. They're about two feet, about two and a half feet tall.
How long have you had them in your classroom?
We've used Carver this year and last year, about since the middle, about mid, sometime last year, and again this year.
And their robot behavior is good?
Yes. Especially when they throw their dance party with the kids.
Any other questions? Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Julie, are you up and running?
Mm-hmm.
Can you do B, please?
It's recommended that the Board approve the purchase of mobile and handheld radios for the Transportation Department and upgrade to the district's radio tower from J&amp;K Communications of Columbia City in the amount of $399,108.98. This purchase will upgrade our district's private radio system by enhancing our radio tower with new electronic equipment, providing and installing 200 replacement mobile radios for buses and supplying 45 replacement handheld radios for our transportation staff. Funding will come from the Operations Fund, and Mike Manuel, Director of Security, Kevin Grubel, Director of Technology, and Rashonda Armstrong, Director of Transportation, are available to answer questions.
Thanks, Julie. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks, Ann. Any questions for guests?
Can anyone tell me the last time that we replaced the radio system or about the proximity of longevity of the new ones? Thanks, Mike.
It's been quite some time. I can't give you an exact date or year, but someone can help me out, but it's been quite some time. Some of our buses was running from our contractor or vendor, J&amp;K. It was up to 18 years those radios have been in there. Some as low as six years. So it's just time to change them out. It's just time. I mean, we have gotten all our use out of it. I guess that's the positive end, and our radio tower is, has, we had an incident this year where it was down, it just went down all at once. We was able to get it back up, but from that incident, incident that happened, clearly we knew it was time to upgrade that tower and get it back because without that tower repeating to the whole city, that causes a major issue for everything for Wayne Community Schools as it relates to our communication.
Where is our tower facility at?
Catawba, which is, well, it's on Catawba, but at the facilities building where MNO and all that is, yeah.
So as we move forward and in a replacement, in a budgeting replacement costs, what are we looking at as far as how many lasts, some kind of a proximity of replacement, when and how long? If it's been 18 years and they've done great, but we're well past the time, are we looking at a five, 10-year?
Probably more like a five, like a five to six-year replacement plan, but not all the radios just start, we'll start replacing them that way, which is the same plan that like security was on. You guys approved back, you know, for those radios, so we'll put them on that plan, including the buses. So you won't get a hit like this again, but it'll be a few years in a row where we'll look into that. And then as it relates to the tower, putting some maintenance on that tower, make sure everything checks out, you know, throughout the years.
Who checks the tower for the maintenance of the frequency of the radios and such?
The vendor does, yeah.
And do they do that yearly for Fort Wayne?
Currently not. Currently, we aren't in a position to do it. There is the ability to have a service contract if you guys would so please.
Can you come to the mic, please? Sorry.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Adam Hurley with J&amp;K. We don't currently have a service contract with you guys. If you guys would like one, we come out every year, we go through the whole system before, well, it'd be during summer before school starts. We go through just this tower site itself, or we could even go through all the radios in schools. That's what we do for most school corporations we work with.
So in most school corporations, you have a yearly, some kind of yearly contract where you can check all their radios, make sure the towers are communicating well, the frequencies up to code and...
Go through, we tune the radios, check all the antennas, all the coax connectors, make sure it's proper before school starts.
So we're starting, all the cars will be doing one. Are there technological upgrades to this thing? Is there different functionalities we have now people doing it?
This puts you into that six, what's called six and a quarter, which is latest, greatest thing out. That's where the FCC is forcing us to go to in the future, so they'll get you guys there so there's no unexpected in the futures. We're already there.
What did you call it, the six?
Six and a quarter kilohertz. It's a digital protocol.
So we're going to be ahead of the, we're ahead of the curve?
You are.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So next up, are you up and running, Noah?
Yes. Recommend the Board approve the UKG Ready Time for School Software and Time Clocks from UKG of Lowell, Massachusetts, for $352,810, and the implementation services from HR Architect Inc. of Frisco, Texas for $52,000 for a combined total of $4,4,610. The UKG Ready Time for School solution will provide Fort Wayne Community Schools with a new time management software solution and 110 time clocks. This is a hard word. HR Architecture Inc. will provide implementation services. The solution will replace our current workforce time clocks and software. Funding comes from the Operations Fund. Requests or proposals were, and invitations sent to 17 prospective proposals with five responding, and the UKG HR Architecture was the lowest. And Kevin Gribel and Stefan Pittiger are here to answer questions.
Okay. Sorry, I was reading some. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Noah. Any questions for Kevin or Stefan?
So this is going to be time clocks for every facility? Two? Just two?
So currently, we have leased time clocks. So we had to stay in compliance with workforce or current vendor. So we decided to do a two-year lease to get us through to, we make this decision. So we have old time clocks that are out of support right now in the buildings, and then the leased time clocks are under support. By the time we go active, our ETA on this is July 1st of next year, then the lease will end in November, and so we'll return those time clocks, and we'll be up and running 110 clocks across the district. That'll be up under the new system.
How does pricing compare to prior service provider?
I don't have the capital upfront from the vendor before to compare that with. I know the time clocks this go around were pretty comparable. UKG, though, allows us the option to not cover hardware support on the clock because from our experience, the clocks, there's very little that go wrong with them. And I'd rather not take out an insurance policy that I'm not going to use, so we're just going to have a few spares on site and then do a time and material repair on those.
Anything else? Thanks, Kevin.
Yep.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Jen, can you do the comments?
It is recommended that the Board approve the application for an acceptance of an advancement from the Indiana Common School Fund, CSF, for educational technology equipment in the amount of $2 million. Advancements from the Common School Fund provide funds for school districts to purchase educational technology. Fort Wayne Community Schools will use this money to help fund the Fort Wayne Community Schools' technology plan previously submitted to the state. Technology funds are currently insufficient to fund all the technology needs of the school corporation. Funds are provided as a loan, and we are, and are awarded to the school corporations on the basis of assessed value, AV per pupil, with the low AV per pupil corporations receiving funds before high AV per pupil corporations. Fort Wayne Community Schools therefore cannot be assured of receiving the requested advancement. Should the application be successful, funds will be budgeted in the Debt Service Fund to repay this loan beginning in the year 2026. Interest on the loan is expected to be no more than 4% and is likely to be as low as 1%. Common School Fund advancements different from school technology advancements account, account loans, excuse me, which Fort Wayne Community Schools receives on an annual basis. Unlike CFF advancements, STAA advancements are given to all applying school corporations, regardless of their assessed value per pupil ranking. And Kevin is still here to answer our questions.
Thanks, Jen. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Jen. Any questions for Kevin?
When would we hear back on this?
Maybe Rosie can answer that more definitely, but usually after we apply, it's approximately two months-ish or so. So we're hoping to hear back late this year or early January.
How likely are we to be approved for it?
From my experience, the times that the state has offered it, we've always received it.
Thank you.
There was once.
Well, the once we were denied.
Thanks for that story.
The previous director of technology says that there was...
I love it. Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Kevin.
All right, thanks.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ann, can you do item E?
Certainly. It is recommended that the Board approve a three-year contract for refuse removal and recycling services from Republic Services Inc. of Fort Wayne in the amount of $1,013,239.10. The contract is for refuse removal and recycling of mixed paper and cardboard at all locations throughout the district. The contract term is from January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027, with an option to extend. Funding will come from the Operations Fund. Requests for proposal invitations were sent to two, to four prospective proposals to responding. And Pete Smith, Manager of Maintenance and Operations, will be available to answer our questions.
Thanks, Ann. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Jen. Any questions for Pete?
When would we hear back on this?
Maybe Rosie can answer that more definitely, but usually after we apply, it's approximately two months-ish or so. So we're hoping to hear back late this year or early January.
How likely are we to be approved for it?
From my experience, the times that the state has offered it, we've always received it.
Thank you.
There was once.
Well, the once we were denied.
Thanks for that story.
The previous director of technology says that there was...
I love it. Okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Kevin.
All right, thanks.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Ann, can you do item E?
Certainly. It is recommended that the Board approve a three-year contract for refuse removal and recycling services from Republic Services Inc. of Fort Wayne in the amount of $1,013,239.10. The contract is for refuse removal and recycling of mixed paper and cardboard at all locations throughout the district. The contract term is from January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2027, with an option to extend. Funding will come from the Operations Fund. Requests for proposal invitations were sent to two, to four prospective proposals to responding. And Pete Smith, Manager of Maintenance and Operations, will be available to answer our questions.
Thanks, Ann. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Tony. Any questions for Pete?
Are they the incumbent provider? Is Republic the incumbent provider, current provider?
They are, yes. Yeah. It was Republic and Green for Life were the two that bid on the project.
And was there a very large increase from last year's contract to this year's contract? Or I guess it's a two-year contract?
It's a three-year deal. I don't believe... Ryan, was there...
Over $2,000.
Yeah, sorry.
Nope, you're good.
Our last bid in 2018, it's about a 30% increase.
Oh, wow.
So it's fuel and just everything since those days, it's...
An annual?
Excuse me?
Did you say 30% annual increase?
30% for year one pricing is about, is 30, approximately 30% higher than 2018 pricing. They do have year two and three price increases of... Oh, gosh. I think it's around about 5%. It's approximately 5%. Things like 4.8% or something like that. But they have built into years two and three, but yeah, so compared to 2018 bid pricing, this current year one pricing is about a 30% increase.
Was that the last time we had it put out to was 18?
Yes, correct. 18 and implemented in 19.
That was a six-year contract?
It was a three-year, but when three years was up, it was during COVID when it was pretty much impossible, or not impossible, but bidding, it just wasn't a good situation to bid, and the state did allow us to do extensions, and it was built into the contract to do an extension, so we did do another three-year extension.
Was this our first time to increase us in the last six years, until the past six years?
Yes.
That's 30%?
Yes. Yeah, it was a pretty good increase, but...
Okay.
Best bid we got.
Yeah.
And they're the incumbent, which they, it's a very complicated process for all the, schedule all the deliveries and the recycling and everything, so we're confident that they'll continue to do a good job.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Tony, can you do the donation? Item F.
It is recommended that the Board approve the granting of a permanent easement at 1936 West Wallen Road to Fort Wayne City Utilities. It is further recommended that the superintendent or his designate be authorized to sign the appropriate documents and take the necessary steps to grant Fort Wayne City Utilities the permanent easement. The proposed easement is 30 by 220 feet, approximately 1.52 acres, and is located on the property of Washington Center Elementary School. The donation of this permanent easement supports Fort Wayne City Utilities, ongoing efforts to enhance system capacity and upgrade infrastructure as part of the Village Drive Stormwater Improvements Project. Darren Hess, Director of Facilities, will be available to answer questions.
Thanks, Tony. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Noah. Any questions for Darren? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Julie, can you do the south side? Thank you.
It's recommended that the Board approve the following construction contract for the Southside Athletic Annex Parking Lot Expansion Project from Brooks Construction. The base bid is $663,774. There are two alternates for a total contract of $682,794. The project includes site improvements and parking lot expansion at the Southside Athletic Annex. Project specifications require the work to be complete by August 1, 2025. And Darren Hess, Director of Facilities, is still available.
Thanks, Julie. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'm moved for approval.
Thanks, Julie.
Second.
Thanks, Jen. Any questions for Darren?
So what's the expansion?
You're talking about the parking lot that used to be where the tennis courts were? That's correct. So we're basically doubling the size of that existing tennis court directly to the north.
To the north?
Correct. So it'll still be just outside of the existing football field.
So you had to move the fence?
Correct.
Because there's no longer any need for whatever used to be there, like long jump or something like that?
Yeah. I mean, we're actually going to leave the fence there, we're just going to punch a couple holes into it because that way we can use one as kind of the normal daily parking lot and then open up the other one when we actually have games.
Is there daily parking there still?
That's the only parking there because all of our overflow parking previously, we had it Elmer's, that lease expired, and then we had it at South Transportation, we sold South Transportation. We need overflow parking for the events we have there.
But is there daily parking there?
For practices, yes. Yeah.
Is that going to be adequate for, you know, events held there?
It should be. We've already talked with Tori and ADs, you know, parking the buses up on Noel Road. We always have some students park on Noel Road, too, and shut them down at one of those really big events. But most times when we have a softball game, we try to not have a baseball game, you know, it's when they're away. And then the fall, we just have cross country out there.
Anything else? Thanks, Darren. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Ann, do you want to, oh, sorry, no, Jen. I got out of rotation.
It is recommended that the Board approve the appointment of a project architect slash engineer for the following 2025 CPP projects at various locations. HPB, auditorium HVAC improvements, and auditorium sound lights and technology improvements. There were several, there's several involved in this for the building envelope, the flooring, the general building system, site traffic, pickup lanes, sound lights, technology. Indiana law requires the project over $100,000 makes use of a registered architect or a professional engineer for developing plans and specifications. Project architects, engineers need to be appointed now to allow sufficient time for planning and bidding on the projects. And Darren is here to answer our questions. So each of them have an estimated contract that you can see.
There's a lot. Thanks, Jen. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Julie. Any questions for Darren?
I do have a question. It says here auditorium sound lights, technology improvements. Is that for the auditorium?
No, that's actually for Snyder High School, Wayne High School, and Northside High School.
Oh, okay.
North and Southside, not any of that?
We completed Southside about four years ago and about the same time for Northrop with the renovation. We had a package we just finished up actually last year.
What three high schools did you say for? Snyder?
Snyder, Northside, and Wayne.
And Wayne. And do we know, are all of these expected to be done in 2025?
That is the plan, yes.
All right.
Is this funding from the GOBON?
It'll be coming from the 2024 GOBON, correct.
Any other questions?
Well, the sound system, sorry, no, you're good. I've been in Northrop and Southside, actually, and heard the improvements, too. So are we looking at similar sound systems in all three of the other schools? Are they coming from the same source?
It will be from the same source, but we're using those as our baselines, yes. So it's not only the dimming on the theatrical lighting, but also the sound and any of the components that we have to plug into for microphones, things like that, projectors. So we have better presentation qualities in there.
So all of them should be closer to the same level of production that we see at the other schools?
That is correct.
Or better?
With newer technology, yes.
If we did there four years ago, providing similar but better technology.
Yeah, it's the same baseline, though, for the expectations.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Give everybody a break. It is recommended that the board approve the following change order. Guaranteed Energy Savings Project HVAC improvements at various locations. Uh, the contractor is Performance Services. The contract amount is $15,539,406. Uh, it looks like we're adding[627.92][627.95]$174,520, which is a percent change of 1.12. Reasonable allowances and contingencies are included in base bids for most projects because of conditions or fees not specifically known at the time bids are taken. The use of these allowances and contingencies are authorized by the administration only after review by the facilities department administrators and relevant architectural and engineering firms personnel. To avoid major delays in construction projects, change orders, change order decisions are generally required and made prior to an official board meeting. And Darren is still here to answer our questions. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved. Second.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Jen. Any questions for Darren?
Is this from projects funded by Esser?
Uh, that is correct. This was a project completely funded by Esser to replace 11 buildings worth of UNIVETS.
So the additional 175 grand roughly, is that not Esser dollars or is that?
It's, it's also using Esser dollars. So we added scope at the end of the project, um, to complete two of our buildings that, that we had funds available to do so.
Do we have any more Esser dollars left then or is that, that's all done?
It's all done.
Is this kind of the last of it?
Trying. We're almost done.
Okay. Anything else? Thanks, Darren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Make sure, yep, okay. Uh, it is recommended that the board approve a resolution to set expenditure category goals for the 24-25 school year. The goal is to improve upon the current percentages between the expenditures for the student instructional categories and other expenditure categories. Beginning in the 2007 through 2008 school year, school districts are required to establish goals for each category of expenditures that will increase the school corporation's allocation of taxpayer resources directly to student instruction and learning in light of the unique circumstances present in the school corporation. The Department of Education most recently reported the following percentages. Um, so there is student instructional expenditures. Uh, the state is at 58.1% and FWCS is at 63.4%. Academic achievement, the state, the state average is 48%, while FWCS, um, our percent is 51.1%. Instructional support, the state average is 10.1%. FWCS is at 12.3%. Other expenditures, the state average is 41.9%. FWCS is at 36.6%. Overhead and operational cost, the state average is 22.4% and Fort Wayne Community Schools, um, is 18%. Non-operational expenditures, the state average is 19.5% and FWCS is at 18.6%. FWCS was 5.3 percentage points greater than the state average in dollars spent on instruction. Chief Financial Officer Rosie Shipman will be here to answer any questions. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved. Second.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Tony. Any questions for Rosie?
So is this the state's latest published data? Sorry.
It is.
21, 22?
Yes. Well, it says our resolution is going to set expenditure category goals for the 24-25. So what are our goals? Beat these? I mean, the one the state really cares about is student instructional expenditures, right? Because that is dollars to the classroom. Yes. And so is our goal to beat the state average? Is our goal, I mean, what's our goal?
It's always to beat the state average, but we, we are beating this now, so.
Right.
And we just found out, um, the dollars that we, you know how we have to beat the percentage of 62% for, towards instruction for, um, teachers? And we just got our rate, our percentage this week and it's 67%. So we are hard.
If we set a goal of 65%, we're already behind that then?
Pardon me?
If we, this says 63.4% and you just said we're at 67. So if we were trying to be great and say, we're going to go from 63.4 to 65, we're already behind that.
I guess I just mixed apples to oranges for you. Our percentage for this here is always to beat it, but we don't know, they don't give us the, it in a timely fashion, but they also set the goal of 62% that we need to spend for, spend for teacher salaries. And we have beaten that and we're at 67%. So we, there's, we're easily beating the state average.
So our resolution is just to create a goal to beat last year?
Right. But you don't know if you're, you're winning or losing because they don't report it in a timely fashion. It's kind of an odd thing that we have to report.
So do we have a set goal or is it just beat the?
We always want to spend more in the classroom than we do anything in, on any operational expense. And so I don't necessarily set a, set a percentage, but, um, if you would like me to start doing that, I can certainly do that.
And when you say the state says 62% on teacher salaries, is that 62% of education fund?
It's all funds that pay teachers.
All funds.
Mm-hmm. It's the salary and bridge.
All funds that pay teachers are all funds?
It's all funds that are allowed to pay teachers.
Okay.
The operation fund can never pay for anything, um, as far as instruction.
Right.
But any grants that we receive, that all is in that percentage.
Since Rosie's list of, if you'll mind, Madam President, I would call our friend Sandra Voss the microphone. As a, uh, member of the FWEA, how does your community feel, where we stand in relation to the state average?
I think we always beat the state average, but the state average isn't like that great goal. And because their information is always way behind, this, to us, when we see this, it's kind of like a checkbox, something that the legislature says you've got to do, but they gave the information not in a timely fashion, like she said. So it doesn't really help us set anything because it doesn't look towards the future. It's always kind of telling you what you did in the past. So I think our history has been that we have traditionally done really much better than the state. But of course, we can always do better.
Thanks, Ann. All right. Any other questions?
We'll make a resolution to do better, is the essential. By law, we have to do this.
Yep, we have to read all this apparently. Okay.
On, will be approved. Or can we already do that?
No, we haven't. Yeah, no, not yet. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We are now to, oh. Yeah. Yeah, there's the resolution. Okay. Um, it is recommended that the board approve the proposed Fort Wayne Community Schools 2025 appropriations, the 2025 levy and the three-year capital projects plan for '25 through '27, and the bus replacement plan for years '25 through '29. A public budget presentation was made at the September 9th, 2024 Board of School Trustees Meeting. All board adopted funds and proposed budgets were discussed and estimated tax rates were reviewed. The notice for the capital projects plan and the bus replacement plan were properly advertised on the Indiana Gateway and the FWCS website. A hearing to allow the public to make comments on the advertised budgets, the three-year capital projects plan and the five-year bus, bus replacement plan was held on October 14th, 2024. All legal requirements for advertisement and hearings have been met for all funds, the capital projects plan and the bus replacement plan. And Rosie Shipman is still here to answer any of our questions. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved. Second.
Thanks, Ann. Thanks, Tony. Any questions for Rosie? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. We're getting there. Sorry. Here we are. Okay. An overview of literacy within Fort Wayne Community Schools will be presented. Shannon Quigley, Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and Courtney Lumbley, Director of Secondary Education Instruction and Assessment, will be presenting and available to answer any questions. And the floor is all yours, ladies.
Ladies and Madam President, members of the board and Dr. Dian.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present to you on K-12 literacy, instruction and growth and the next steps for literacy at Fort Wayne Community Schools.
As we reflect on our literacy across the district, our priority is to ensure that all students have access to a robust curriculum and targeted instruction that empowers them to meet the goals defined through Fort Wayne Community Schools' Portrait of a Graduate. Our vision for literacy is centered on developing skilled, confident readers prepared for success in any path that they pursue. Through systematic explicit instruction, we are committed to building a strong foundation that supports learning across all subjects and grade levels.
We would like to begin tonight by highlighting the growth we're seeing in student data. As you see on the screen, we have had some incredible celebrations with our third grade students on I Read Three. Over the past three years, we've seen an increase in our data with our district-wide passing percentage increasing 11%. In our last school year alone, we had an increase of 5.4%. We recently had one of our schools recognized by the Indiana Department of Education for receiving a 100% passing rate. So Croninger Elementary, I see some of you in the crowd tonight. Congratulations. We strongly believe that data, along with all of the data, reflects the dedication and commitment of our Fort Wayne Community Schools educators, the hard work of our students and the partnership with families and our community to strengthen literacy for all of our students.
On ILEARN, our district has consistently surpassed the state's average growth rate. For grades three through five, Fort Wayne exceeds the state proficiency growth by 1.7%. And at grades six through eight, we surpassed the state average growth by 1.2%. Our goal is to continue to close the gap to be at or above the state average.
Okay. Now that we've taken a look at the current data, we want to share some information around the intentional shifts in our curriculum instruction for our elementary classrooms that we believe has been impactful in our data and growth and how we're going to continue to move forward with our intentional work. The curriculum that is utilized in our elementary schools has been rooted in the science of reading, ensuring that all students are receiving research-based instruction that meets, that meets the needs of both early readers and students developing higher levels of proficiency and comprehension and writing application. We've looked closely at our entire curriculum and realigned our core curricular resources to ensure that it supports each of the core science of reading components, phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. In order to strengthen our students' foundational reading skills, we have implemented a systematic and explicit phonics awareness, phonemic awareness and phonics program, UFLI, in all of our K-3 classrooms. As we work towards the state goal of 95% of third grade students passing I Read Three by '25, we want to make sure that we have a clear picture of our students' strengths and areas of growth. In order to do this, we are data-focused to the implementation of different assessment resources. Our elementary students in K-2's foundational reading skills are measured through the DIBELS assessment. We are utilizing the ILEARN through years, through year testing and summative assessments to measure our students' growth towards standards mastery. And this year, we're utilizing adaptive programs such as Lexia to give our teachers data in real time around their students' reading needs. In addition to our classroom resources, we are continually looking at how we can support literacy growth for our students. This summer, our third grade I Read students participated in a reading camp. In this camp, we were able to provide small group intense literacy instruction that positively impacted our student passing rates on the summer I Read reassessment. Not only was the hard work of students and teachers reflected in this passing rate, but with 93.4% attendance, it was well received by our students and families. In addition to our summer support, we've created intentional work with our classroom addition of literacy assistants who see small groups of students for reading instruction. We have a district-wide license to Lexia's Adaptive Reading Program to target student-specific needs. And we are also using this program to align closely with our community partners, including Study Connection, to provide instructional materials and guidance that align with those students' needs during each of their weekly study sessions. Finally, in order to support continued educator growth, we are working as partners with Marion University and the Indiana Literacy Cadre to strengthen our literacy instruction through a student-centered approach. This program provides professional learning around reading instruction and empowers our instructional coaches to lead the work in their buildings. In addition to this work, we have continued to offer professional learning opportunities for all teachers throughout the summer. We offer in-building support and we provide on-demand resources through our HCMU platform.
The work around the science of reading continues in secondary as our reading 180 intervention aligns to the explicit and systematic instruction for foundational skills. Morphology and syllabication have been added this year to middle school maps to continue to strengthen our study of words and word parts as students broaden their literacy skills and apply them to higher-level content vocabulary. We have also expanded Read 180 as a pilot in one high school to support students with those foundational skills. We continue to use HMH Growth Measure and DNA data to monitor supports and growth at the high school as well as ILEARN through year data assessments at the middle school. These data points help us track student growth as well as identify literacy standards that can also be reinforced in other content areas. With the help of teachers, coaches and curricular writers, we continue to improve the maps to support best practice and instruction in meeting our students' needs. Our Portrait of a Graduate competencies have been embedded in maps to continue the focus of making the work and learning experiences of our students connected to their real world and to our keys of, for success. All of this growth and continuous improvement would not be possible without the hard work of our students, teachers, instructional leaders and families of Fort Wayne Community Schools. Let's take a look now at what some of them have to say about literacy here in FWCS.
Can I ask a quick question? What's morphology, morphology?
It's a great.
You don't want to hear that?
No.
It's a great question and I would love to talk for about 30 minutes on this. Um, morphology is the study of word parts and meanings. So at the, at the elementary level, we, we have explicit instruction how to break those word parts out and decode them. And at the middle school level, we talk about the meanings and putting them together. So then we're sitting in an eighth grade science class and they find a word this long, then not only can decode them using our foundational skills, but know the meanings of those words.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
We have a big push for reading in classrooms, both English classrooms and, um, other content areas. And I have definitely noticed in my room as well as just in the hallways, a lot of students having books in their hands, which I think is great to see more students just, um, consistently having things to read with them. Our media specialist invites, uh, first graders from Glenwood to walk over to the library. And she does this on Fridays, but sometimes a couple of days a week. And then she invites any seventh period class to come and read to the first graders. So we have a couple of science teachers who actually bring their seventh period students down regularly and they partner up with one of the little first graders and they read to them for the class period. So that's a great way that they are celebrating literacy from the elementary school all the way up through the high school. And volunteering their time to do that helps students see how valuable reading is for kids.
Yeah, I think the backwards planning that we've learned, like through our PLCs, has helped us with that. And we saw the results, like when we were meeting, um, last week, we were looking at like the 20% of our students who scored above proficiency, which in the past has not always been the case for us. And so being able to meet with administrators and district people and to collaborate and like bounce ideas on how to better like teach all of these standards is paying off. Like we're seeing like in real time, just like how the kids can improve on these things that they missed on the pre-test.
Hi, I'm Sarah Wortman. I'm the principal at Fort Wayne Community Schools.
I'm the principal at Forest Park Elementary. And the greatest successes that we have seen recently with our literacy instruction is that students are empowered to tackle new and unknown words. They're empowered because we have systematically taught them the rules that phonetics follow by using UFLY. The students can apply those rules that they're learning to new words. They feel confident, they are excited to try challenging words, multi-syllabic words, and they are thrilled to be able to use the rules that they have learned in their reading day-to-day.
And show me. If you didn't get it, write it with me now. What letter says "M"? And, everyone, let's write a couple together. Where do we start for "M"?
At the middle.
At the middle, ready? Middle, bottom, middle, front.
I got one.
At the top. At the top. Bottom, at the top. Toxic, by jumper, tabby, it's true.
When I go to the library, I always pick out, like, chapter books, for example, this one. So that's why I like to read. I think it's a fun because it helps you get smarter, it's fun, and it's healthy.
I try to read them the best I can, and once I figure it out, I can, like, say it without having to hesitate.
I like reading because we can learn different words. Like, in class, when we do UFLY, and we can read.
It's important to learn good reading in school because, like, you want to be able to enjoy the books that there are.
I like that they make words, so then we can read them. She tells me the sounds of the letter, and I know the words.
Hi, I'm Anya Garcia, a senior at Southside High School. I've noticed a big difference in my reading. We take a test in English class a couple of times a year that shows us our reading level. We set goals on where we want that to be, and I notice my score going up each time, which is really cool. I also read a lot more than I used to. I mainly pick things to read about cinematography, which is what I'm interested in doing for my career path. I do a lot of that work and reading through my internship, but I also read about it on my own time, because that's what interests me, and I love learning about it.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to share around literacy instruction, and we are excited to see the continued growth with our students and teachers.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And that brings us to board member comments. Toni?
All right, well, just congratulations on the improvement in the iRead scores. I've gone to a couple of the iRead celebrations at the different elementary schools, and it's just really great to see all the work that the teachers, instructional coaches, are doing in the classrooms. Well, when I was at Northcrest, being principal for the day, also seeing some of the work that they're doing in the classrooms. And so congratulations, also congratulations to Croninger as a former Croninger parent. I know all the great work that they're doing there, so.
I was, I enjoyed reading the series that Ashley Slabota did in the newspaper on career and technical education. And they followed, or ended kind of with the essay contest that they had, and they published the essays on Saturday from the first, second, and third finishers. It was really interesting. It's interesting that, you know, there were students who have tried more than one career area. I think there was a young lady on there who had done culinary and construction and business and manufacturing. But a lot of interesting comments, you know, they really, two of our students from Fort Wayne Community Schools, I think, who are part of AMP Lab, and they really liked the experience of being able to explore the different career possibilities, using their creativity, having real-world, hands-on experiences. Talked about how they've really built their confidence over the last couple of years in career and technical education. So it was an interesting series, but it was really interesting to read the student comments about how they feel about their experience.
Well, I would agree with what Aunt Renee said, and I agree with what Julie said, as usual. And I just encourage people to go out and vote. Thank you.
Last week, I was a part of our district's legislative lunch, and I, first of all, want to shout out to all those who put that lunch together. It was very well-received. We had several legislators there. I think there were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, I believe, that attended. And we had the opportunity to share the work that we're doing with them and hopefully get a little more support. And I think that we're doing a fabulous job, and teachers, and teachers who are here tonight, thank you for all that you do. It's, the hard work that you've put in and the changes that we've made are starting to show the rewards of that hard work with our kids. Croninger, obviously, you're at the top, let's just stay there. And I know that's a hard thing to do. There are several years that my kids were actually in that school that we get rated on attendance. And when you're at 98.9 or 99, and you go lower, and you get a, lower by 1%, and your rating drops, is a crazy thing. But, so we can't always just look at those numbers, but we do know that our kids are doing great work with our curriculum. Everybody that presented to us tonight, I do appreciate all of that. And we're hearing things like, we're that gem in our state, I think is the word that was used from one of our legislators the other day, that we're doing something different than everybody else's. And that was a really good thing to hear. And so I just encourage you all, with everything that is thrown at you, that we continue to move forward with that progress and do great things. Thank you so much.
About a week and a half ago, I went to Snyder on a non-school board-related reason, but I hadn't been there for probably four or five years, and I was just impressed because they had the teacher's picture and their schedule on their door, laminated. And then they had, if they were an alumni of Snyder, they had their senior picture on their door. So I thought that was just a really neat addition. I went to principal for day at Brentwood with Mr. Megan, and it was really nice. He had a nice schedule for me to visit different classrooms and to see what these, was just presented to us about phonics and that, the different programs. Lexia, I got to see that in action. So that was really interesting for me to see. I had lots of questions, and still have lots of questions, and talked about it a lot, because it was just interesting to see, see the kids do the phonetic sounds and things like that, and then put it together as words, and changed them up and things like that. That was really interesting. And tomorrow, I'm going to see our own Felipe, Director of Nutrition Services, at Nourishing Our Community with our local food system, and he will be on the Farm to School panel discussion tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to that. And I also thank Ashley for putting together the CTE series in the newspaper. That was very nice, and appreciated that.
Dr. Daniel?
So I'll just add, we had student cabinet this morning, so want to thank Mrs. Stockman, also Mr. Shivo, for bringing those students together and focusing on what are we doing well in FWCS and student testimonials? So very proud of our website, because we believe that is the portal into our district for new families to Fort Wayne area, and I think that's top-notch. Also, this Saturday, we're at Transportation. I see Rashonda there. Thank you for what you did this weekend, this Saturday, with all your drivers. They had trunk and treat, by the way. So took, took a couple of grandkids there, and they went around, and I was able to, what was it, the brain, the one person? Yeah, yeah. Oh, the mad scientist. They really thought that was something. But again, it just shows what's happening in our district, the spirit, the culture. We were there Friday morning as well for some gratitude with our drivers and our staff there, and you could just see that they were, they were very together, and appreciated that. So lastly, I'll also comment in regards to state legislators. So we've had some key legislators to Fort Wayne, from Senator Rotz, who is the chairman on the Senate side for the Education Committee, as a principal of the day. We've had, then our meeting this past Friday, we were able to meet with them at Electric Works, but then they were able to travel over to AMP Lab. They are seeing things they don't see across the state. And again, kudos to our teachers, kudos to our staff members who are making those things happen. And quite frankly, I think there's a pride that we have in Fort Wayne Community Schools that we are an exceptional school district. And as we talked to the student cabinet this morning, diversity is our strength. So it's very, it's very rewarding to see what's happening. I mean, you can't beat 100%, right? So, but again, how do you see that in all the different various elementary schools? And then hearing what we're seeing in the middle school and high school in regards to literacy, and we do believe literacy is the foundation, and numeracy will soon follow. Because if you can't read the problems, you can't, you can't go to the, to the next level of solving the math problems. And lastly, Study Connection, very appreciative of what's happening in that space. We have 36-plus volunteers right now at Lebon Scott. Those are coming from FACE and from GRILE. We go there once a week on Thursday. We sit down with our individual, our third grader, and if we didn't have, is it Lexia? If we didn't, I'm not an English teacher, but I'll just say, that sure helps me, because here's the individual plan for that youngster, for that, for that student. And I can tell you, we've only had two times with them, but they are very proud, those students, of what they're achieving and how they're improving. And they love sharing that. So again, volunteers, we are wide open for volunteers. We'd love to expand these into numerous of our buildings, but can you imagine 36 kids being, having individual mentoring once a week? We know that's going to make, that's going to improve those kids, their reading levels. But again, it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen without the teacher providing that information. So, so very grateful and appreciative.
Thanks. Just a couple of things to share. It seems like it's been a busy school board event the last couple of weeks. So I got to be principal for a day at Wayne High School with Dr. Franklin. It was great to not only see the construction that's been going on there, but then to really meet Dr. Franklin. I hadn't gotten an opportunity to do so, and he is wonderful. I watched him do like a conflict mediation that was like the waltz. It was beautiful. He goes, "Do you have any, do you have any feedback tips?" And I was like, "That was amazing. I can't, I can't say anything else." And it's one of those, like, "Can you give me lessons on how to resolve conflict the way that you just did?" While I was at Wayne, I got to see the open gate systems in action and got to help give the students back their stuff as they walked through. So that was nice to see that in action with lots of students. I also then went back to Wayne that same week with Mr. Hadad's class. He did the WBOI Rock the Vote, and the students research who's coming to the class, and then have questions prepared for those individuals. And as I'm sure you all could imagine, they had lots of questions about the yonder pouches and open gates detection units, but I knew they were coming for me. So my niece is at Wayne as well, and she said, "Sometimes I tell people, 'You're my aunt,' and sometimes I don't." So she said, "There's a lot of people mad at you, Aunt Rea." So it was really good. The students had thoughtful questions, they had thoughtful follow-up questions. I think that they understood where I was coming from, and I had to stand firm when it came to their safety. I think that they just saw, they just see it as an inconvenience, but when I said, "I absolutely will not budge when it comes to your safety and the safety of every student in every building, and even the staff members," you know, we want everybody to be as safe as possible. And I think that, I think that they got it, that like, people care about us and they don't want anything to happen to us, not that we just want to annoy them day after day. So, yeah. The other thing that I got to do, I got to go visit Rashonda and the bus drivers at the transportation visit on Friday, and that was just a breath of fresh air. That group was so lively. You guys really are a family. It was nice that you all celebrated your breast cancer survivors, and just the joy that the bus drivers exuded. It filled my cup, so I was glad that I was invited to do that, so. And I think that that's all I've done in the last couple of weeks, so it's been good. And that didn't include all of it, it just, you know, the high points. So it's been busy. Okay, so our next meeting is, where are you? There you are. Monday, November 11th, at 6:00 PM. Is there a motion on the floor to adjourn?
Adjourn, Madam President.
Second.
Thanks, Noah. Thanks, Julie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Croninger, for coming tonight.
Stay there a little longer.
Congratulations.